Mr. Vice President, whenever you're ready.
Shall we stand for the president?
Our president's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening to all. In the absence of our president tonight, Mr. Alonso Anderson, who duty has called him once again, we greet you and welcome to Pike MSD Pike Township Metropolitan School Board Meeting, regularly scheduled October 23rd, 2025. Meeting has been called to order, and at this time, if there's anyone for the good of the cards that would like to share, you may at this time state your name and within your timeframe.
Good evening, Chris Ludi, Pike Classroom Teachers Association President. I wanted to rise and thank Dr. Young, the entire board, the cabinet, and let everyone know that last week, we presented the tentative agreement to our membership, and it was ratified 97% yes to 3% no. So I'd like to thank all the cabinet members that were able to participate and all to the school board members who were able to make it and be involved in the process. We're in a great place and a lot of collaboration going on right now between PCTA and the administration. Dr. Bishop has been leading a calendar committee. I quite honestly don't know how she does it, how many people show up to that, especially early on. And Dr. Nunley, PCTA has requested that we look at the evaluations, and we have an evaluation committee that's starting up now that we have a calendar committee that's wrapping up, and we have bargaining that's wrapping up. So lots of collaboration, thank you to everyone involved, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludi. Is there anyone else all right?
Mr. Vice President, Board, Dr. Young and Cabinet, I'm Marty Hofer, Secretary for the Board of Directors of the Pike Township Educational Foundation. As you saw on the donation section of tonight's agenda, the foundation is back at it for this school year, continuing to support the students of Pike Township. I want to highlight the kindergarten students line item. Next week, our board members will begin visiting every kindergarten classroom across the district. Thanks to a grant from Everrise Credit Union and other community partners, we will read the fairy tale Dragons Do Not Share. It's absolutely adorable. And then gift each of the hundreds of kindergartners their own copy to take home. This initiative directly supports early literacy and reinforces the vital social emotional skill of sharing across all of our elementary schools. Also, hopefully you saw on social media recently that we have awarded our first round of grants for this year. This was a very competitive grant cycle. We could have given away our entire grant budget this cycle. We received requests totaling over $27,000 from our amazing teachers, and we were able to fund about $8,000 of what was requested. The need for our support is clear, and we must raise the funds necessary to empower our teachers and students. And so we invite you to join us as active partners in this mission. So right now, if you'd grab an ink pen and jot down two important dates. March 7th is the Treasures Gala, that is on a Saturday evening at Broadmoor Country Club, and June 18th, which I think is a Thursday, is the golf outing. So we would sincerely appreciate you attending both of these events, and we ask that you share these dates now with your entire network and invite anyone you know who's passionate about investing in Pike students. So I'll give you those dates one more time. March 7th is Treasures, and June 18th is the golf outing. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Mrs. Hofer. All right, is there anyone else for the good of the cards? No one else for the good of the cards? We are on the spotlight on Pike, Sarah Dorsey.
Good evening, it's wonderful to see you all again. As always, we've had a lot of really wonderful things going on in Pike. It is to the point where we are struggling to figure out what to highlight, when to highlight, where to highlight it. I mean, it is just amazing, and it just keeps coming. You may have seen last week that one of our amazing New Augusta North students, London Howard, is getting straight A's in school and walking the runway at New York Fashion Week. She made her runway debut in February. She was invited again to walk last month and has already been contracted to walk next year in New York Fashion Week. And although one of her goals is to become America's top model, her other is to be an educator. So we're extremely proud of her. In addition to being an outstanding scholar, she's also a cheerleader. So congratulations to the London, and that is just, I mean, 13 years old, walking in New York Fashion Week. Our Pike High School girls and boys cross-country teams had determined to showing at their sectional last weekend and advanced to compete in the regional, which will take place at Brownsburg High School on Saturday at 10:30 a.m. And other wonderful cross-country news, we learned that three of our team members were named Academic Allstate, and five received honorable mention. And to even qualify for that is very rigorous, so we're extremely proud of them and look forward to sharing more information about that very soon. Right now, it is opening night for Frankenstein over at the high school. At Deer Run, they're having one of their family nights. If you've never been to a Deer Run family event, guys, at their, like, welcome back to the school year. There are DJs, there are bounce houses, there are food trucks tonight. They have a popcorn vendor who has come in, it's one of our parents, and they are inviting all of our guests to make their popcorn, or make their, get popcorn, and you know, they have different flavors for free, just supporting the school. So it is going to be, I'm sure, an absolutely phenomenal event, and I look forward to sharing pictures if Ms. Graham is kind enough to send those our way. Next week, on Tuesday, we have our marching band community night at the stadium. It's at 7:00 p.m. If you haven't been to that, it is a very, very cool event. You get to see the marching bands show. In addition, you get to see our eighth graders perform. So that is an outstanding opportunity to support one of our phenomenal performing arts groups. Then on Wednesday, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., we have Pike High School's annual safe trick-or-treat event. Admission for that is $1 or one canned good per child, 12 or under, and those donations support our Pike Red Zone Food Pantry, which will be open on Monday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So we are promoting that. If you know anyone in need, that is open to anyone in the community. It is at the Pike Freshman Center, the Pike Red Zone Food Pantry, and that's from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And we've just received just a number of incredible donations from community partners and businesses wanting to support the Pike Red Zone Food Pantry, so we're going to be sharing that information as well. I don't want to leave anyone out, but we're extremely grateful for the outpouring of generosity. It is much needed right now. Last but never least, we want to thank the, actually before I do that, one other saved the date that's a little further out, but it feels like time is moving so quickly. On November 12th, Pike High School will host their annual open house, and that's from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. And I don't know if you had an opportunity to attend last year, but Mr. Wally, his students and his staff do an outstanding job, really giving people an opportunity to get a sense of the robust curriculum and extracurricular experiences offered. At Pike High School, we like to say it's an opportunity to see Pike excellence in action. So we encourage anyone in Pike or beyond, because now everyone belongs in Pike, to come out and see that for themselves. Last now, last but never least, we want to thank the donors listed on this evening's agenda. The Jean Haas Foundation donated $3,000 to our Pike Robo Devils Robotics Team. The Pike Township Educational Foundation donated $1,500 for Pike High School's E&amp;L Department for their mentoring club. As Mrs. Hofer mentioned, they donated $3,900 for their kindergarten book program. Country Kids Kettle Corn donated $575 for our Pike High School Animal Science and Urban Agriculture Field Trips. And we received a Donors Choose donation for our Life Schools Classroom at Lincoln Middle School that was worth an estimated value of $197.32, and we're extremely thankful for all of those supporters.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey. Reports to the board, discussion of the 2025, 2025-26 tentative contract agreement with our bargaining teachers' union and teachers' agreement, Dr. Hunter.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Young. We're excited to share with you our tentative agreement, and to follow along with Mr. Ludi, it was an exciting time and a good time of collaborating, and I want to share some of those highlights with you on tonight. Some of the highlights, well, we dealt with increased compensation, of course, we addressed contract language, new coaches was added, maintained the sick day buyout, insurance committee, and then salary updates is what we will discuss and review in this TA, this tentative agreement. The base salary raises, we're given an average of 3.3%, 3.36% average increase for all teachers. We looked at the sick day buyout, we retained that from the previous year. Eligible teachers may cash out up to 25 sick days at a rate of $60 per day, as long as the teacher maintains a balance of at least 100 sick days. The buyback will be first come, first served, up to a cap of $80,000 that the district will spend. The new coaches that were added to Appendix B and additional coaches that were added to our ECAs were middle school boys volleyball coaches. There were three boys volleyball coaches added at a cost of $3,100 per coach, and the middle school boys volleyball assistant coaches were added to each of the middle schools. Well, now when we begin to look at our contract language, we looked at the attendance stipend will be discontinued under this contract, removed from the 24-25 year, we removed it out of the 25-26 contract. We, again, we retain the six-day buyout allowance. The additions to the wording is in red, as you can see there. However, the district will pay out no more than $80,000 for the six-day buyout. The district will pay the buyout in the order and receive teachers' requests up to the $80,000 cap. The amount will be deposited in the individual teacher's VIBA account, and these deposits will be made in 2026. In addition to that, a committee of equal representation of up to five representatives shall meet to discuss insurance coverages, services, and all the costs associated with it. Salary overview, the bachelors and zero teachers will receive a $500 added to their base salary. Masters and zero teachers will receive $500 as well to their base salary. This raises the bachelors and zero to $53,500, and the masters and zero to $56,680. Returning teachers will receive a 4% increase in their base salaries, up to a cap of $104,872. All teachers will receive the raises regardless of their evaluation rating. Look at that a little bit more closely, starting salaries for new teachers will be bachelor's and zero $53.5. Bachelors and one will be $54,781. Masters and zero will be $56,680. Masters and one will be $58,068. Maximum new hire base salary for bachelors will then therefore be $77,873. Masters will be, the max salary on the master scale will be $97,233. Copy of the previous 24-25 pay scale to your left, and then the 25-26 pay scale to the right for your comparison. Looking at the literacy endorsement, the literacy endorsement that's coming about from the DOE, teachers may provide proof of that endorsement to the Human Resources Office prior to January 1, 2026, in order to receive a stipend during the 25-26 school year. Teachers that submit that will receive a salary increase to their salary, base salary, of $250 for the 25-26 school year. Teachers will only receive this increase one time in the teacher's career in Pike Township. It will not be added again, it will just be a one-time added to them. The timeline that we've dealt with, that we use, was course ratification by the PCTA on Friday, the 17th. Tonight, our tentative agreement with you on the 23rd, and then we're looking to bring it back for you for your ratification on Thursday, November 13, 2025. Thank you, are there any questions I can answer for you? So, Mr. Hunter, Dr. Hunter, excuse me. As it relates to the increases of our teachers, are we competitive? Yes. Last year, we were in top five. We stayed there, about top five in the state with salaries.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you.
We're on to alumni excellence, Dr. Larry Young.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I'm excited tonight to highlight for our alumni excellence, Mr. Nicholas Perry, who is a 2011 graduate of Pike High School.
Hi, everyone, my name is Nicholas Perry. I graduated from Pike High School, class 2011, and I'm currently an SRE, Cyber Reliability Engineer for PNC Bank. Once I graduated, I did go to college more focused on getting my baseball career started, but based in the county as well, so I took some time to actually focus on myself. And so I started looking at what I love to do, and that was something to do with gaming. Gaming led to technology, and I found out that within technology, I can be as free and as creative that I always wanted to be. My work experience right now, I started my career actually at a logistics company, maybe Annapolis. I actually got an opportunity from the manager at the time, who believed in my work ethic and managing that, the database from there. From that, I went to Bell Technologics, Carville, and I end up moving out to Arizona. I became an IT engineer for Circle K, where I was troubleshooting the systems, helping build their cloud computing aspects from on-premise to the cloud. From that point, I took a course, a recruiter actually reached out to me on LinkedIn, and that's how I was able to get my opportunity at PNC Bank. The day-to-day for a cyber reliability engineer is what department which you focus on. So in my department, I handle the architecture side, which I look into handling VMware, which is the point of handling virtual machines, networking, and everything on the backend, the architectural side. And then finding opportunities to make the business run more efficiently, optimize it to the point where we're not having too many issues, and then handling guessing tickets and diagnosing those tickets where, hey, this is an opportunist opportunity for us to come back. I have two teachers specifically, one is Ms. Taylor. She was a Spanish teacher from New Augusta and ended up working at Pike. She was just, she always accepted me for who I was, and just being able to be in her room and just, you know, be myself, especially at that young age, especially what I was going through, was always welcoming. And then my math teacher, Ms. Glaze. I love Ms. Glaze, she was just awesome. Like, she gave me every opportunity and showed different ways on how to learn. Her ways on how she approached to make sure that some people tried to get the lesson and try to figure out different ways to teach us how I find different ways to understand my tech. Ms. Glaze showed us there's different ways to understand a specific subject within math. There's not just one way. So let's break it down so you can digest it, so you can understand it. And so I used that concept when I used it in tech as well. So it was, she has no idea that I went back as far as my senior year to use that, what I am today in tech. You will get real-world experience and knowledge from Pike Township that you will carry on into the real world. And meaning that the day-to-day that you face as an adult will be things that you face to the day as a student. And there's opportunities of learning. You'll never know what skill sets that you'll grasp from school that you use to a day-to-day in your work life. And so with the diverse environment that Pike Township provides and the networking opportunities, you will want to carry those skill sets into the work world. Being diverse, being able to understand people of different culture is a huge and needed skill set for anyone to be successful in life, because we are just more than one type of individuals. And that is Pike Township is diverse in a point where it's all different walks of lives there. So if you're able to sit down in a classroom, collaborate with each other, learn amongst each other, you will carry that skill set longer into your life, into different situations that you will be thankful that you grasped as a young kid, to a teenager, and to even to a young adult, to a middle-aged adult. You would love to have those skill sets because it's needed within this world. And I'm grateful that Pike was able to provide that for you.
Well, Mr. Perry lives and works in Arizona, so he wasn't able to be here with us this evening, but I am confident that he is watching the board meeting tonight. So at this time, I would turn it over to the board if you'd have any comments.
Any comments from anyone on our board, okay?
Well, I've got to jump in because I love seeing an IT professional get the alumni excellence. So just congratulations to you. I love also the, what I talk to people all the time about, it's not necessarily a straight path, that he, you found your niches in all the different ways and landed in cybersecurity. And while they can be a thorn in your side in business, they're needed. It is, they're the gatekeepers that protect the business, and so there's no doubt the future is bright for him in the field he's chosen. So congratulations.
And I just want to say, I know you guys get tired of me saying, I know this kid, but I know Nick. And to see him soar the way he has soared, considering how he was at Pike High School, he was a jokester, I mean, he, you know, he just was, he was really smart, but you know, he was a young runner. But to see him, it just blew me away that he even had that much knowledge and understanding of the technology that he is, you know, portraying up there. And I'm really, I'm Peacock proud to know that he has brought this to us as a student from Pike. So Nick, if you're watching, yes, Ms. Wilson is right here. Hi.
I'll just say, I'm, as an educator, excited to see that he made the connection, that the real-world connection of, okay, how does this math? Like, we're always like, I'm never going to use math. You have students say that all the time. He just proved how he made that real-world connection. And so as he speaks to students, hopefully some students will get to see this video and understand, my teacher, my math teacher's not just standing up there spouting things, but actually speaking real truth, that you will use what you learned to solve real-world problems.
In our, this morning, I was in a session, and Purdue Polytech was presenting, and the very thing that they said this morning, I thought, okay, we have those same things. And one of the things they were selling themselves on was diversity. There are hallways filled with children that are excited about learning, and they just went on and on and on, the, actually, the principal words. And I'm sitting there listening, and I'm thinking, but these are all the things that Pike excelled in. And he comes right back tonight and says everything that I heard Purdue Polytech say this morning. And so I'm glad to know that we are, we're on the ball, and I appreciate that. All right, we move on tonight to B, C actually, professional learning, Dr. Hishy Gatewood.
Good evening, Vice President Webster, members of the board, and Dr. Young. I come to you tonight to introduce Sarah Henry. She's the consultant who has supported our professional learning communities work for the last several years. She's here to present and share what we've been working on.
Mr. Vice President, board members, Dr. Young, I'm so grateful to be here this evening to share the good things we've been doing the last few years with professional learning communities. So a little bit about myself and how I kind of got here. I have my background, I have 25 years in education. I'm licensed elementary, middle school, and high school. Got my admin license and did instructional leadership for 11 years. And in working in Brownsburg Community School Corporation, we found some secret sauce on how to do professional learning communities in a way that teachers actually find of benefit. And so I had co-authored Arrows, and Dr. Larry Huff had happened to read the book, and I think passed along to Dr. Young, and that's kind of how I got to be here doing this work. So I think it's important to kind of understand the why behind this work. There are lots of different models of professional learning communities, and definitely some work better than others. But this is really based on the work of John Hattie, and what he has done is a meta-analysis of all the different studies in education, and determined which specific strategies are actually giving us a positive impact on our students and their learning. And so he uses this scale, a point four is what we would want all of our strategies to be, because a point four means that we grow students a year and a year. If we go higher than that with strategies, we know that we can actually grow students more than a year and a year if we're doing that consistently. So based off his research, what we've had the last couple of years is the number one factor that's impacting student achievement is this notion of collective teacher efficacy. In education, we like to come up with these terms that, you know, could mean lots of different things. So just a little bit of a description, this is educators feeling comfortable with one another to try new things and make mistakes, and grow from that, and improve our instruction for the benefit of our students. And in collective teacher efficacy, imagine that we really trust one another to bring up all of the students. So a common phrase that we say is they're all of our students. It shouldn't matter which teacher that they have, we're all in this together, and we know if we put our minds together with all of our different backgrounds and experiences, we're going to be able to help more students. So professional learning teams or professional learning communities are one way that you can get to collective teacher efficacy, and so that is what we're working. You see a 1.57 impact size. So, you know, we could grow a kid several years in a year if we're all doing this at a high level. The second most impactful factor is the teacher's estimate of student achievement. So this means that while I'm teaching my lesson, we talk a lot about, they need to taste the soup while they're teaching. So I'm teaching my lettuce, my lesson, and I've got all my plans, but I might ask students a question to see if they're understanding so far. And I might have already decided what might I do if they aren't understanding at this point. Being able to respond and give the students timely feedback, we know that that timely specific feedback, especially within 48 hours, research shows, has a really positive impact on student learning. So these are both part of the PLC process here in Pike Township. Our goal when we started, and this is kind of what we've still been working for, is we wanted to train teacher leaders. A lot of districts will run professional learning communities with administrators or coaches. And what we've found in our work is the teachers don't buy in. We know that research says the best professional learning for educators is job embedded. So to be able to look at what I'm currently doing in my classroom and in my instruction, and to be able to grow and learn from others for that. So we really were trying to empower teacher leaders, because we know the more capacity we build in leadership with our teachers, number one, it helps build the bench for future leadership, but also that buy-in and that collectiveness comes a lot quicker when we have that. So really wanting them to feel confident in skills, so a lot of the stuff that we did is prepping them on, how do you run a meeting with adults? What do you do when that one person wants to bring up all the negative things and you're just trying to get through the agenda? So we really worked through a lot of those pieces as well. So to reach this goal, what we've been working on the last few years is creating that common shared understanding and framework here for the systems at PLCs. We had pockets of people that had been trained with other models of PLC, and we had a lot of new staff members that hadn't been trained at all. So kind of our first step was getting everybody on the same playing field. We referred to that, we're all playing the same sport, was kind of our first goal, like, we're all doing this the same. We have a common agenda so that every building, every department is using that same agenda so that we're all working towards that same process. Equipping the building and central office leaders with that vision and some practical tools to help them with aligning and, you know, the sustainability of PLCs within their buildings. Really worked on training PLC leaders. Each year, we add a little bit more, so we talk about adding to our onion. If we did it all that first year, you know, it wouldn't have been effective, so we just kind of slowly add. And then making sure that those PLC leaders feel confident to have those kind of rigorous conversations with their colleagues. So in fall '22, spring '23, I specifically supported Central Eastbrook, New Augusta South, and Deer Run. We kind of started off with which buildings were interested in, kind of testing it out, did basic training with those buildings, really worked to develop that capacity in their leadership teams, and then... And then the book Arrows was shared with the elementary leaders to kind of get a background behind where this model was coming from. I mentioned that a lot of the work that we do is how to deal with other adults. You would think that knowing how to work with students, that somehow that we would be able to transfer those skills. But I'm sure even in your other professions, you know that this can be sometimes a daunting task. So this is an example of an activity that we did district-wide that first year to really make sure that we were coming up with norms for our PLC meetings that were actually authentic and would make people feel safe to actually have those rigorous conversations. So we talked a lot about there's certain dynamics within teams that can cause problems and that if they ever feel a rub, it's probably a pole between these. So we looked at, some of us are really task-oriented. We want to get that job done, we've got 45 minutes, let's go, right? I want to leave, I want to make my copies, I want to, all ready. And then we have some people that need that relationship, right? For the love, can I please talk to another adult, right? Can I have five seconds with an adult? But when you're working together in a team to solve these problems, that can cause a rub. And so if they put their sticky notes on places that were further apart, they were to create a norm for their PLC that would make both sides happy. So we might decide that if we're on task and we stick to the agenda and we get all the way through, any time left will use for relationship building. So that's just an example. In fall 2023, spring 24, the focus, we started working on district-wide, those common systems, understanding the PLC work and just some of the basics. We aligned how we were using that common agenda. And the other piece we began to align is how do we give feedback so that the teachers know how they're doing in this work? So we developed a common way to, it's almost a rubric or a continuum, that's able to let the teachers know and for us to provide feedback to help them grow in the work. And then we gave copies of Arrows to the secondary leaders that year. These are just some examples of when I've worked in buildings. We've got Deer Run and Central. And then in the upper left was a training I did with the principals. So we always come together once or twice a year as building administrators so we can align and make sure that we aren't straying away. But also, there's so many great things going on in Pike. And we never, it's, it's hard to find time to be able to share that with one another. And so we always take pockets of time for them to be able to sit together and share the good things they're doing so that we're not working in silos. This is an example of what we did with admin and with teachers to really understand what the different phases of PLC work look like. What does that actually look like and sound like? There's a seven, a seven-point scale continuum that we use. Seven being a really highly effective PLC. What we have found is that if you get your people to a level six or higher, we see larger data growths. I would say currently, if I were to like give an average for the district, we're probably somewhere between a four and a half and a five. We've definitely got PLCs that are at that six and we're bringing the others up along, along the way. Fall '24, spring '25, our focus turned to really understanding how do we get good data or evidence to bring to those conversations that's actually going to help us with our instruction? And so part of that was training them on the difference between summative assessments versus formative. And those formative assessments are like I referred to earlier, where you're tasting your soup as you're teaching. You're maybe doing a dry erase board check or you might have them stand up if they agree, sit down if they disagree. Any way that a teacher can quickly gather that information about all of the students where what we see otherwise is teachers will ask a question and then we only call on the students whose hands are up, right? So we've got to make sure that we really have a good estimate of where those students are achieving. Got to present at Elevate focused on kind of the why and what of PLC for more of the non-PLC leaders, just to start to build that capacity across that. Formative assessment and a focus on literacy in the content areas. We started to do building observations and feedback. So what that looks like at the elementary is I would sit during their PLC meeting and watch the entire meeting. And then I give them feedback on which level they're at and give them a question or a push area to continue to grow in that work. Definitely differentiation for each building, depending on the leader's background, whether they were new, lots of different reasons. Every building was kind of at a difference, a different place. And so being able to meet them each where they were at to get the journey to move forward, I think proved to be really beneficial. The four questions that we, we talk about in those meetings are what do we want our students to know? How are we going to know that they actually learned it? What might we do to our tier one instruction as far as a scaffold? Just like in painting, we use that scaffold to be able to paint to the, you know, all pieces of the house and then we take that scaffold down. We have to think about what are the things I might have my student use to reach that grade level standard until they're ready to do that on their own? We looked also at, we've got to make sure we're pushing all of our kids. In our model, we don't believe in just pushing the, the labeled gifted and talented or higher ability students. We believe that all kids deserve exposure to rigor with support. Here's some more examples, working in the different buildings. Really trying to get that understanding of the assessment piece. That's a hard switch for people because in the older models of PLC, what you were supposed to do is look at the very end data. So here's my test, the kids didn't get it. I guess the one day I have left, I'll try to save everybody, right? Where now we say, okay, what are we about to teach? And what might we put in place to help the kids? Okay, I know these two students are new to English. So what might I use in my lesson to help those kids find more success? That's part of that, that conversation that they're having now. This year, the focus switched to that scaffolding piece. And so I've been doing a lot of training with buildings on what are, just kind of reminding ourselves, you know, it really was a thing after COVID where there's some practices that we stopped doing and, and there, there's so many things in education that get thrown at us. It's like, oh yeah, I remember that, I used to do that. It was actually really effective. So reintroducing that idea, tier one instruction, you know, that's the first time the students are being taught the lesson with the whole class. We want to make sure that we're doing that the best we can the first time so that hopefully we have less students that need that reteach at the end. Did some Elevate sessions this summer on cognitive engagement, really making sure with new curriculums and things, sometimes we get stuck in a rut. So making sure that we're following brain science, that about every 10 minutes, we've got to have the students do something with their learning for that to stay in their long-term memory. So maybe it's a turn and talk or it might be a question I have them think about, a problem to try. And then for PLC, we had a whole district session on how do you figure out the best evidence to bring? Again, did more observations and feedback. We did some training for the secondary this year. So if you can imagine in an elementary, we have six PLC leaders. But at the high school, you've got every subject area and every specific, you know, biology, chemistry. And so to get all of those people to be able to do the training during a school day is not, not doable. And so we had a great opportunity this year to be able to provide on some of our relearning times, training to get the secondary teachers kind of up to where our elementary teachers were with this process. And then I'm also doing extra support this year with the middle school through the Lilly Grant to really ensure that we're doing PLCs in a way that are not only helping their, their win time, their intervention period, but also in helping the teachers grow in their instruction. So just some more pictures, you know, up in the upper right, we do this work at the Early Learning Center. We do this work at the high school, so there's not a level that is not able to do this. I think another exciting thing is that this is starting to spread out where we're hearing good things and we have pockets of, hey, could our guidance counselors work together for a PLC? Why not? Could our principals work together? So it's really a system of how you solve problems. And I think it's super cool to see how that's starting to expand out. We did do training with our special student services and making sure that we thought about all those areas. It's also important to think about those special areas like related arts. You know, I might be the only music teacher in that building. So who am I supposed to talk to on these times? And so we work through and really make sure that we're finding something that benefits them because their work's just as important as all the other content areas. So pictures from Elevate. My proposal for next year is we're just going to be kind of fine tuning and starting to establish a maintenance plan. Obviously, if wanted, I'll do Elevate sessions on PLC-related topics. We'll start to wean off my support, so less days and really working to align what we're doing with Pike's MTSS systems and continuing that support through the Lilly Grant for the middle schools. I think we have a lot to celebrate over the few years. Having a whole district this size aligned in that work is pretty amazing. Having new teachers now, we have that part of the process that they get trained when they come in with their, with their other classes or, or professional learning that we might give them so that they are caught up to speed with how we're doing this process. We've got all the admin, all the teacher leaders trained and we're receiving continuous support and coaching. And kind of amazing, but as we've gone through this process a couple of times, I think we've looked at each other and been like, the teachers are asking for more of this. And that's kind of a rarity because their time is super, super precious. And so when they ask to have more of this time, it means that we're doing some good things. We've seen a consistent upward trend in the state testing data and graduation rate. They're having deeper conversations and we're really moving to that collective efficacy. And then like I mentioned earlier, just that that work is starting to expand out into other areas of the district as well. And now I could take any questions that you might have.
Thank you tonight for your presentation. The fine tuning, what does that look like?
So really just making sure, so I can give you like one, for example, we have new administrators at Guyan Elementary and at Eagle Creek. So their buildings and kind of making that transition, we're kind of getting them caught up. So really trying to get everybody to that same spot. Really thinking about what is it that we don't have in place that we need to consider as Sarah goes to leave so that they're able to continue the work?
The maintenance piece. Establishing the maintenance plan, what does that look like?
So working with Dr. Young and Dr. Gatewood, we'll look at kind of what we feel like is needed to keep the, this program going. Whether that's, you know, more spread out support, whether that's things they need to consider. If there's a system that's missing that we haven't thought of, those type of things.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there ever any vertical articulation of T-K through 12?
That's a great question. Again, it's pre-COVID, we had lots of space for that and after COVID, that's been harder. So we definitely, the one thing I'm really excited this year with our middle schools is we have three PLC dates where they're all gathering together. So our three sixth grade, science can be together, our three sixth grade, social studies can be together to have alignment in the curriculum. And for them, again, so that we're not working in silos because there's a lot of good things going on and that we're working smarter. So that would just be an example of that. I know elementary, we're looking to find maybe some time this year for that as well. I actually was just at Snacks the other day and the kindergarten teacher was asking, like, I would love to get with other kindergarten PLC leaders to be able to hear how they're interpreting this. So it's definitely something that we're continuing to try to add more of.
I appreciate that the different grade levels are working with each other. I was specifically referring to verticals. So where the kindergartner is with the first grade, the first is with the second and so on.
Thank you for redirecting my answer. I think one of the things that we have seen is most of your PLCs are coming together in a common space in the building. And so this, this provides those great opportunities. We're like, hey, I know we just got this new English curriculum, you know, what is it that you guys are expecting? And we saw that with the new literacy program trying to fill in the gaps of like, wait a minute, we jumped into our third grade curriculum, but we don't really know what the kids are supposed to go through before. So there's definitely, they're always looking at the, the standards and making sure when they can have those conversations in, in that common space. I'm not sure otherwise for the district if they're offering other vertical times.
We're actually doing some of that. We're taking our, our professional development day, November 4th. And we're actually providing those opportunities for that vertical articulation for our staff during that time. And actually, I know you want to talk about it, but we're actually going to model very similar to what we do over the summer with Elevate Ed. So that would be, and I wish you that that group feedback that we received from our teachers, that they wanted those opportunities. We had done some things like that in the past and we're bringing those back as well.
That's very encouraging to hear, thank you.
And I would just, just, just share a little bit of the history. So about, and, and board, the people in the community in the room may recall, four, five, six years ago, our, our test scores had dropped off. And I remember when I took over that, that January, there was an article for that 21, 22 school year I took, took over in, in that January. Pike Township was the only school district in Marion County that had shown no gains at all on I-Learn out of 11 school districts. As interim, I created what I call the roadmap for it. I know that Dr. Webster was on the board at that time. And a component of that was, was PLCs. Because one of the things that I saw that we needed, just through talking to administrators in the building or teachers, was if you ask about a professional learning community, you could have a response all over the place. So we wanted to provide, one, the culture that we, as educators and as teachers, come and we look at data, we review data, we create plans based on that data, we implement that, that data. It's a circular process. But we also want to have the structure as well. And Mrs. Henry has provided that. Brownsburg, and one of the reasons why, you know, I wanted to kind of look towards the model that Brownsburg used, because at the time, year after year after year, Brownsburg wasn't the most affluent school district, but they were the highest achieving school district year after year after year. And one of the things that through my understanding and talking to staff members, that they were doing at a very high level was the work that they're doing in, in PLCs. And I think it's been a, 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 a big component of, of the success we've had over the last, you know, few years.
May I ask another question?
Sure.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Ms. Henry, the onboarding for new teachers. Retaining teachers is, is important to me. Because you can retain teachers, create the longevity. It really strengthens the educational environment and industry structure, I believe. I believe that.
I agree.
How are you doing with that? When we look at new teachers coming in and your onboarding as a relation to this particular PLC coaching ideology you have?
So this year was our first year of, of offering that session for our new teachers. I know that the current teachers were excited because, you know, sometimes when you have someone new come in, you kind of have to regress to get them caught up. So this provided an opportunity to have them feel prepared because again, their people are doing PLCs lots of different ways. And so we wanted everyone to understand what the Pike expectations were. I will say that I've heard from a lot of teachers and PLC leaders that they've found this process is very beneficial for the new teachers because I've got my peers and their experienced brains in this work who can offer me suggestions and I'm not just trying to figure it out all on my own. That helps retention in that I'm not drinking from a fire hose every single day, maybe some days. So I think that that process in itself, you just have that extra support, which in turn helps our students because when we have new teachers, then they're, we're not, you know, kind of regressing back with them not doing the process correctly or things like that. So like I said, they've shared that comment to me before that they feel like it's helped. And then actually, I was at Snacks the other day and Mrs. Jones, sorry, I was trying to think of her last name. Mrs. Jones was sharing with her staff that they've had a couple of subs that have really been excited about how easy it is to substitute there. And we all know how hard it is to get subs these days as well. When we're all working so aligned, if I, God forbid, had an emergency and I didn't get to get a lesson plan together, those kids aren't going to lose out because those colleagues already know what it was that they were going to focus on. And so that in, in turn provides support because I know when I subbed before teaching, sometimes you show up to a messy desk and you don't even know where the subplans are, right? And so I think that piece too, it creates that tight alignment, which makes it easier for everybody.
That alignment that you just mentioned, how far is that alignment stretching in our district?
I would say across all pieces, don't you think?
Oh yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're making progress. I think, Dr. Moore, to your point, it's a great question, the maintenance piece. Because as we, you know, tried to kind of move on even from the health that we've had for the last few years with Mrs. Henry, we're always going to have new teachers. So part of our maintenance plan is going to be, you know, how do we make sure as we bring new educators in, whether it's a teacher or a principal, how do we get them up to speed in this work that's now? whether it's a teacher or a principal, how do we get them up to speed in this work that's now going to be part of Pike Township's culture moving forward? So I think we've made a lot of, a lot of progress and, and we're heading the right direction.
Fantastic book. I've been looking at some of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question for you. And your, your goal, you said that you guys are having instructional practices to eliminate racial disparity. And with what we're dealing with nationally, with the schools, how is PLC dealing with that piece?
You know, I think because we're focused on the people work in this model, we're super reflective on ourselves and what we may or may not be doing. I think a, for example, would be, you know, before as a teacher, maybe I would average all of my, my test data and, and say, look, 85% of my students are doing really well. But what we know is if we aren't looking at the subgroups, we don't know really that everybody's doing well. And a, for example, that happened to me when I was a teacher, I had two students of Asian background and they always seemed to be paying attention and never asked questions. And I had a bias or an assumption that I didn't even know that I had, which was they're good at school, right? They must be doing okay. When I actually looked at my data apart and I saw, gosh, these two Asian students are actually really struggling, that allowed me to say, okay, what is I'm doing or not doing that is impacting the students' learning? And so I think as those conversations come up, we help one another kind of think through, is it something that I'm like not even realizing, like, why do you grade out of 10 points? Or why do you do this? Sometimes we just do it because that's what we knew, right? So I think it creates the space for that. We talk about, you know, not having deficit ideology. So making sure that we're not going under the assumption that because someone is part of a certain subcategory, that that means anything about them, that we are looking at them as individuals and what they need specifically.
So in your PLCs, you guys are proactively, as you stated here, you're proactively trying to support that so that you do have those teachers that, as you said, had no clue about the Asians. So those other ones that have that, are they saying something about it or are they just kind of keeping it to themselves?
So as we get closer to that collective efficacy and there're more of that trust is built, we're seeing more of those conversations. So at first it's always, we start small. I might encourage, let's look at your male versus your female students. And we can find some easy things there that, that we could try to impact. And then we slowly start to build in those other kind of lanes that we're going to zoom in on because some are, people are more ready for that than others, as you would expect.
Thank you. Cause that's a hard, most teachers, that's a hard subject to tackle because of, of the sensitivity of it. So that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
We gave her enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We're on to the last board report. Mr. Gruber, blue ribbon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Dr. Young, I am excited to give you a Blue Ribbon Plan update. This is my fourth annual Blue Ribbon Update. We like to do it every fall. I know I was just in front of you a few board meetings ago to give you an update on our summer projects, but this is a little bit higher level. We're going to kind of go back and talk to about the, the bones, if you will, of our capital plan and, and what the Blue Ribbon Plan really is. So just want to start with a couple reminders of what the Blue Ribbon Plan is and how it was developed. So we really look at three different categories. We look at historical data. We look at the, we do superintendent walkthroughs in the spring, and then we look at overall needs in the district. So historical data is when was that building constructed? And you want to be looking at midlife refreshes, been the 17 to 20 year range, because that's when things like your carpet and your wall coverings, your ceiling tile, your toilets, your sinks, all of those things that the students are engaging with on a daily basis, they begin to fall apart, right? And so we want to look at doing those interior refreshes. Then we look at end of life renovations and those are when we get into the, the more complex systems, your HVAC systems, your roof, your building envelope, doors, windows, et cetera. And so we, we want to map all of those things out so that we understand, hey, we have two or three buildings that are going to age out around the same time. So we need to plan ahead for that so that we're not getting hit with, you know, 40, $50 million projects all at the same time, we can spread them out over time. The superintendent walkthroughs have been really, really helpful. Since Dr. Young has, has taken the role and, and the lead of this district, we've done them every spring. We go, we walk every facility. We look at just the overall condition. And that is more kind of looking at a lot of short-term projects. We do identify long-term projects when we're doing that, but we're looking at what makes the biggest impact right now. How can we improve the facility as we bring our kids back to school in the fall? And then anything that we can't tackle in the summer, we add that to the capital improvement plan or the Blue Ribbon Plan. And lastly, is needs. We look at programming. I think a perfect example of programming is since we've gone one-to-one, the need for computer labs has kind of gone away. So we need to look at ways that we can repurpose those spaces and make them a, a more efficient educational space. We look at life and safety, fire sprinklers. We look at the, the burglar alarms, cameras, all of those type of things. And lastly, we look at emergency repairs and breakdowns. So a chiller should last 40 years, right? But that's not always the case. Just like you could go buy a lemon off of an auto lot, sometimes you get a heat pump or a, a boiler that is just a lemon. And you're just always putting money into it to repair it. So we look at that and we can add that to the Blue Ribbon Plan and pivot as we need to. So there are three major components of the Blue Ribbon Plan. The first is the facility needs or the categorical matrix. And so that's a big spreadsheet, super colorful for you. And that, we'll go into a little bit more detail about because there's some specific things that I want to point out. The project needs matrix, that is kind of more of our short-term plan, projects that need to be done in the next one to three years. And then we have an extended forecast, which in your board packet, I call project list master. So that is all the projects we've identified thus far, all put into a spreadsheet with tentative timeline, budgets as close as we can get to. But this categorical needs matrix is really important because it gives us a snapshot of where we're at in the district. So every fall, I go through and I do a facility condition assessment. That's where I look at our work order system. I go through the buildings and identify the condition of our buildings and our systems. And by doing that, we look at these five different categories. We look at building interiors. So that is your carpet, your, your paint, those type of things. We look at building exteriors, your roof, your expansion joints, your flashing, all of those things that keep the bottom, the building dry. Mechanicals, so heating and cooling, water coming into the building, electrical, et cetera. We look at auxiliary areas, which are things like our media centers, our performing arts areas. Those are all managed a little bit differently than a classroom. And then miscellaneous or maintenance and operation items, furniture, signage throughout the district, fire alarms, burglar alarms, those type of things. And then each of those areas kind of have a subcategory, as you can see in the needs matrix, and then they're given a, a score. So zero would be good to excellent condition. So for example, deer run on the interiors went from a three to a zero this year because we did renovations. The middle schools as well, on all of our hallways, we went from a three to a zero because we made an investment there and made improvements. A one is there's some wear and tear. So we're, we may be five to seven years in, 10 years in, and things are starting to, to wear a little bit. They're still in good condition. We can keep them clean. We can keep them nice, but hey, put it on our radar. Let's get ready. Two is approaching the end of useful life or we're having a lot of repairs. Okay? So we may have a piece of equipment that still has another 15 years of useful life, but we're putting money into it on a more regular basis. So we need to put that on our radar. Or hey, we are approaching, this heat pump has been in service now for 17 years and its life cycle's only 20. So we need to be ready because there could be catastrophic fault, catastrophic failure in the very near future. And three are things that are like, listen, we gotta, we gotta address this immediately. It's beyond its useful life. So we've stretched it out as far as we can and/or frequent repairs or it's down more often than it's up. So these are the kind of the things I wanted to, to point out on this category and this needs matrix. Because I do the update every fall, I went back and looked at last fall's numbers. And so first I want to identify some, some things that have changed, right? So last year, at this time, we were talking about deer run. Deer run was up around 60%, which means 60% of the facility needs to be addressed in some way, shape or form. That has now changed. If you look at your document, deer run is down to 30%. So we cut that in half. But the administration services center is now at 67%. So we need to invest money into this facility to bring it up to where it needs to be. Infrastructure, finishes, the whole nine yards. The warehouse as well. The stadium building needs a lot of work to be done there. And Fishback Creek Public Elementary or Public Academy. And what's not surprising is that all of these buildings are kind of aging out. They're kind of hitting that either end of life or midlife refresh where we need to be taking care of these, these concerns. Then when you look at the categorical percentages down at the bottom of the spreadsheet that you have there, we can look and see which areas of the building are kind of of greatest concern. So mechanical, not uncommon, is our highest percentage. So those are things like our power backup, so generators, emergency batteries, those type of things, our HVAC systems and our lighting. Those are all things that we need to address because they are aging or have aged out a lot more than some of the other areas. And we have miscellaneous items, things like custodial equipment, furniture throughout the district. And last thing is the auxiliary areas, which athletics is high and also our kitchens. And I'm working with Ms. Gray to work on our kitchens. So that number should be coming down year over year. Then we go into the project needs matrix. So the project needs matrix are all of those things that are identified really as a three. So we take those, we identify some budget numbers and we put them into a spreadsheet and those are projects that we need to target within the next one to three years. And this spreadsheet is a primary tool that we use when we're evaluating what type of bonds we need to pursue in order to continue to maintain our facilities at a high level. So I meet with the superintendent and the CFO, we meet early in the year, we pull this spreadsheet out, we say, what do we have to get taken care of immediately? And we begin to build that list. We look at bond capacity and, and, and Dr. Young makes those decisions. And then we move forward and that's how we identify our projects. The extended forecast, like I said, this is going out almost all 10, at least 10 years, sometimes beyond. And the idea of this, this list is that every number, every category on the categorical needs matrix, that is a one or higher. So if it's a one, a two or a three, it needs to be on this list. And so I tried to have it be a comprehensive list, but it would be dishonest of me to stand up here and say, I've identified every project that we may have to do in the next 10 years. But what I can say is four years in, that list is far more comprehensive than it's ever been. And we're trying to put, put ourselves in a position to be good financial stewards and to also ensure that we have world-class facilities for our students in Pike. So in your board packet, we printed off copies of all of those things so that you can see them, the categorical needs matrix, the project needs matrix and the project list, the master list, if you will. So there's another portion of my presentation that goes into security a little bit, but I wanted to give you an opportunity now to ask any questions you may have about the Blue Ribbon Plan.
What's the, what is the approximate life, life span of a floor?
Of a floor?
The gym floor.
A gym floor? So a, a wood gym floor should last 30 to 40 years, depending on how frequently you sand it. So when a gym floor is installed, they're usually good for five to seven sandings. And depending on how well you maintain the, the seal or the surface area of the gym will depend on how often you have to sand it. The other challenge you may have is if you need to like change the paint on the floor. So for example, if for some reason we were no longer part of the MIC, we may have to sand that floor and repaint it. So as long as we're not having to do that and we maintain the floor on an annual basis where we do a screening and put down a new seal, that floor should last seven to 10 years before we have to sand it again.
So, so the warranty that we have on a floor, so if we have a brand new floor and for some apparent reason, a month later, we find some issues with it, will they, and feel like the floor needs to be replaced, would that fall under our warranty?
Yeah. So almost all construction anymore is, is really a, a one-year coverage warranty from the contractor themselves. Now, if it goes beyond that, we would have to go to the manufacturer of the floor and, and pursue that in a different path. But really, any construction project you do, including a gym floor, you have a full year of labor and material coverage that if something were to happen in that first year, they would come back and replace the entire floor.
Have you looked at the floor microscopically, not telescopically?
Talking about the main gym?
Have you looked at it closely?
Yeah. So I know exactly what you guys are asking.
Yes, sir.
So there is a ripple that you see in the floor. The floor and the integrity of the floor is 100% fine. What happens is when you put down a brand new maple floor and you sand it, you're opening up all the pores of the wood. And when we put your first coat of seal down, the floor receives some of it and doesn't receive all of it. So the finish itself has a lot of micro fractures in it that you wouldn't normally have on a floor that's been repeatedly sanded and, and sealed year over year over year. Okay? And so what's happening is with those brand new LEDs that we have in there and the radial light that it is, it's causing that ripple effect to come off the floor and it's making the floor look almost synthetic. So what will happen is, is when we do our screening this at the end of the school year and reseal it, it'll have a completely flat sheen and it'll be fine.
So that, that will go away?
Absolutely.
Because that's, that's the complaint. I, I know what they're asking.
And if we had time.
That's the complaint though, that we're hearing in the community. So I, I'm glad.
And oftentimes with a brand new floor, one of the recommendations is, is to seal it twice. We just didn't have that time because we want to get our kids out on that floor.
So time will tell, Dan.
Yeah.
So is the wood a four, is it a three-fourths inch or is it a half?
No, it's, it's either an inch and a quarter, an inch and a half.
Mr. Gruber, I don't know if I'll be here when that time comes, but please get that done.
Yes, sir.
Please. It's important to have that done because I think, you know, when the floor is not really taken care of, it can become worse.
Thank you so much for that.
Is there any other questions regarding the?
The Blue Ribbon, I've got one more, more section if you don't mind.
I do. So it's more of a comment. I, this is always my favorite. I'm just a geek out like that. But I really like to see the order and how we're being very intentional about taking care of what we have and not pretending like it's going to last forever. So I like this approach. I like how it's enumerated, color-coded, there's a plan, there's a bond, there's a discussion. I think all of this is just us being really good stewards of what the community is providing for us. And I just applaud you for that.
Thank you.
The team that makes it happen.
Thank you. So the other thing I wanted to talk about just very briefly tonight was our security needs assessment. So as everybody knows, we, the community granted us a referendum and one of the legs of the referendum was security. And that's something that we take very seriously here at Pike. We have safety committees upon safety committees looking at things, but Dr. Young felt the need to put together a security task force here in the spring. And the idea for the security task force was that we were going to meet and we were going to identify security needs and prioritize those needs and develop an actionable plan. Because we have these dollars that are now available to us with the referendum, but we want to ensure that we're spending it wisely over the next, I guess, seven years now since we're one year in. So in May, we, we formed that task force and it included department leaders, Pike police. We even had a, a member of IMPD come, the deputy chief. And we just brainstormed ideas that, that would be important for school security. In June, we took over all of those ideas, which ended up being over 40 individual security need, needs that we identified. And we sent a survey out to all of the task force members, excuse me. And then based on that survey, we got a, a score out of 10 based on responses of what the most important needs were for the task force. And I was able to put those into a spreadsheet and we identified the top 20 ideas. And we tried to allocate a, a budget, an estimated cost for each of them. There are some that, that we weren't able to really nail down a cost, but for the ones we were, we were able to put that down, that cost. And that's kind of given us a framework, right, of how we may want to move forward and, and build that out. So some of the key findings were several of the top 20 security needs that were identified have zero cost. In fact, Dr. Bishop and the district's safety committee has already begun implementing some of these things. One of them was like training people on situational awareness, right? Such an important thing about being aware of, of what's around you. So we are starting to implement a lot of those zero-cost things already. There was a major focus on staffing, so both armed Pike police officers as well as unarmed officers, like Blue Line Security or Signal that are helping out at athletic events. And then the third one was security cameras. So we found during this process that we have got some people in our district that are experts on security cameras, and they're not our police officers. Our police officers are very proficient. Chief Casper excels at all of it, but we have administrators that are in that system on a daily basis utilizing it, using it to improve safety in our schools, but, but they're asking for more, right? We want more coverage. We want to be able to have better features of, of all of that. And then obviously weapons detection, that needs to be expanded. I did want to just take a minute with the weapons detection to kind of brag on it a little bit. So we implemented that new system this fall over at the high school. And I had the opportunity to run that system for the first two weeks of school. I worked at the freshman center entrance. And those machines count every person that goes through, very, very accurate, a very easy system to use. And so Chief and I, we started adding up all of the counts from each location every single day. And we were averaging between 3,000 and 3,100 people coming through those gates every day. And it just so happens that that number is spot-on with how many kids are coming to school on a regular basis. So we talked to the administration, and when you include students who are coming a little bit later and include students who've taken a sick day, right, that's about the average number of students that are coming in. So we feel very confident in saying that we are very close to having 100% of our students go through a weapons detection system on their way to school every single day. And that is a huge victory. With that, that's all I have for the security needs assessment. Do you have any questions about that?
I do. My concern has always been safety for children and will continue to be that. I was wondering if you all could give a report of the maintenance on our old fleet? And let's compare the maintenance expenses that we're spending on the old fleet of vehicles that we have.
Okay.
I would like to see that presented to the board because I've asked about it, just like I've asked about a website, I hear nothing about it. And so we need some numbers now to see if we can improve our fleet. I see you're working with those things you don't have to pay anything for, but we need to look at our fleet and what we're spending to maintain that particular fleet. Because you're gonna probably end up to the point where, if you go back three years, close to $300,000, I've done some research about what we spent on this fleet.
Okay.
And I know whatever reason it can't get done, that should be a part of the security piece as well. If you do it now, you won't have to do it for another seven, eight years. You have the resources now to do it. Whatever the hang-up is, I hope you all can get past that.
There's no hang-up, Dr. Moore. We're gonna do that. That's gonna be part of the plan.
When will you do it?
We can do the maintenance.
When will you do it?
Well, it's not on here because it didn't come as a recommendation from the task force, but we have seven years, over the course of seven years, it is our plan to make sure that we do have an updated...
How soon will that, how soon will that be in your plan? It's not in there. How soon will it be in here?
I can't give you the date in which we place every single vehicle.
It is in there, Dr. Young.
Yeah.
It's either number 10 or 11 or 12. I was off.
It's at the top of the second page.
Yeah, all right. I, I just want to make, I want to be verbal about it. We see a lot of things on paper sometime and we don't see it move.
One time every two years is what the committee has...
Well, you, you can support that effort, ma'am, but I'm just basically saying what I've been suggesting and asking.
Yes.
You know, it's been ignored.
Yeah.
Oh, and don't, I'm not upset now, I'm just making this point. Because people think when you come at a situation that you're upset, and I'm not, I'm just making a point. That's all.
So I've got a question, and admittedly, it may be in some of the print here, and I just haven't looked at it that closely yet. So the weapons detection at the high school, I did hear some complaints early on about the number of stuff people were having to bring out of the bags, and they felt like it was more than what they were having, but it sounds like that's probably gotten a little bit smoothed out. Are we looking at being able to implement those at, at our middle and elementary school? Because my, my concern has always been, obviously, we want the high school to be safe, but unfortunately, when we hear a lot of these tragedies around our nation, it tends to be the younger schools, you know, the, that, where that's happening. I mean, it's all schools, but I'm just, just wondering, you know, if we're gonna be able to expand it.
Sure. And, and so, so that's not necessarily part of the plan currently now. When we've seen things like mass shootings, it wasn't necessarily someone that's come in who's supposed to be there that they would catch, though. It's been someone came in through a side door, someone broke in, but not necessarily someone who's supposed to be there as a guest or a student. So, so now currently, it's not part of the plan to have it at the middle school or, or the elementary.
Okay. Okay, so I, I think, I mean, we definitely hear of students that get guns in the schools and have done things.
Yes.
So I, I just, I want to make sure that, and, and money's money and it's real, and I get, I just, I just wanted to make sure, you know, just that at some point, if we're looking, you know, at this.
And, and we do do weapons checks.
Correct.
At the middle schools.
Right, and yeah, okay.
Yes.
Every day.
Yeah, we do do that. But not necessarily this, the same system that we have at the high school.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so I just, a side note, I'll point out, for anybody that doesn't like the money that has to be, you know, that we need referendums to come out here, but if you happen to not like the fact that we have to get referendums, but you also don't want to do anything about the problem that is causing us to have gun issues in schools.
Right.
Pick a lane.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes, I look forward to that information on the maintenance, Mr. Gruber.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is that it, Mr. Gruber? Thank you a lot.
I just want to tell you one thing I didn't get to tell you. The gym looks great. It's phenomenal.
I'm pretty excited about it.
But everything else, it was just an eye catcher when you walk in, so.
And probably, Mr. Gruber, if, if we could, I would probably send a correspondence to what you explained to the board tonight, because the average layman may not know what we just heard tonight. And I think it would be good to send that to the, the, those who will be using the floor. Just do the district itself to know, our floor doesn't have a problem, A, B, C, D.
Yeah. I, I could send that to our athletic directors and they can disseminate that.
Yep, there you go. There you go.
If I may, I know I said I was done, but because of your comment, something triggered. So they, they commented that our gym looks so good that the bleacher company is going to ask permission to put our gym in their catalog.
That's great.
We're gonna make any money from that.
Well, well, what I wish here too, one thing that, that people do not necessarily all know, it hasn't arrived yet, at our scores table, there will be a, a video board at the scores table, and we are taking down those old antiquated scoreboards, and we'll have video boards up there as well. So imagine a sponsor, we can do a commercial up there, the, or on the scoreboard on both sides, or the principal giving a, a message about how great the programming is in the high school. So we're hoping to get all of that done, I'm, I'm hoping, before, definitely before winter break.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gruber.
Thank you.
We're on to action items. Number one up is A, is the minutes of the board of approval from our last board meeting, so moved by a motion.
I move we accept the minutes of the board of education meeting from September 25th.
Second. Moving second that we accept minutes of our board meeting from our last meeting, September the 25th, due to the nature and confidentiality of that, are there any questions? We, we permit or we omit questions, we're on to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. We're on to human resource report, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice President, members of the board, and Dr. Young, I ask that you approve the HR report as presented.
So move.
The move in second that we approve our HR report as presented by Dr. Hunter. We're on to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is action item C, request for approval, Mr. Clayton Gruber.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Dr. Young, I'm requesting your approval for action item C, which is to approve the Secured School Safety Grant Award.
I move that we approve the Secured, Secured School Safety Grant Award as presented.
Second. Moving second that we approve action item C as presented by Mr. Gruber, the school safety grant, are there any questions on the grant? No questions, we're on to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you, Mr. Gruber. We're on to action item D, Mr. Troy Emmon.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Dr. Young, I'm seeking approval for action item D, approval to apply for the USA Swimming Foundation Learn to Swim Grant as presented.
I move that we accept and approve the application for the USA Swimming Foundation Learn to Swim Grant.
Second. Moving second that we approve action item D as presented by Mr. Troy Emmon. Are there any questions?
Nope.
No questions, we're on to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you, Mr. Emmon. Action item E, Dr. Alicia Gatewood, textbooks adoption for grades six through eight.
Good evening, Vice President, members of the board, and Dr. Young, I am seeking approval for item E to adopt Study Sync as our ELA textbook for grade six through eight.
I make a motion, we approve the EL textbook adoption for grade six through eight.
Second. Moving in second that we approve action item E as presented by Dr. Alicia Gatewood, textbook adoption for grade six through eight. Are there any questions? No questions, we're on to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you, Dr. Gatewood. We're on to action item F, we want to pull that out, adopt that one by way of vote, and then we'll combine G through I.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, and Dr. Young. I request your approval of the adoption of the 2026 through 2030 School Bus Replacement Plan, the 2026 through 2028 Capital Projects Plan, and the calendar year 2026 budget as
I make a motion that we approve all of the plans before mentioned.
Action item F. Second. The move in second that we approve action item F as presented by Mrs. Monet Gray. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Dr. Moore.
I, I wasn't clear on what the motion was from my sister.
I helped her out. I just, I just said action item F. All right. Any other questions? We're on to vote, all in favor, action item F, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And then we would like to combine actions G through I, Mrs. Monet, for a recommendation of approval.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, and Dr. Young. I request your approval of action items G, H, and I as presented.
I make a motion, we, we approve action items G, H, and I.
Second. The move in second that we approve action items G, H, and I as presented, are there any questions on either item G, H, or I? No questions, we're on to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, thank you. We're on now to board member item, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, both president. I have nothing tonight, I'm done.
Ms. Wilson.
I have nothing to say either.
We're batting good, Mr....
I'm gonna break the streak because I wanna, I gotta thank, I want to thank the Lions Club. I know that they've been going around to all the schools doing vision tests for our students and really appreciate that. It is a critical thing, so thank you to the Lions Club, and now I'm done.
Uh, Mrs. Barnes.
I want to thank Dr. Bishop for working with myself and Ms. Kelly this evening, earlier before our meeting, getting our policies in alignment with the current Indiana laws that just passed very recently. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly?